Okay, we'll start the Wayland School Committee meeting at 6 o'clock. We are being recorded by WACAM. We have the school committee here as well as the administration. So before we go into public comment, are there any school committee members who would like to make any comments or opening remarks?
Oh, 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 I will. Okay, this is about staff, remember?
Yep.
About what?
Staff.
Oh, sorry. So, there's this great high school club called the Water Warriors, which has been on hiatus for the last three years. And it started up again last week, and it's every Wednesday it happened again today. And it is, the high school kids teach swim lessons to our Boston resident students. And they're free swim lessons for a series of 10 weeks. It was started like in 2011 by a high school student who realized that there was a need for swimming and that drowning actually is one of the leading causes of death for kids of color. And it's been so much fun. I just help volunteer at it. But the laughter and the number of kids in the pool, they're just having a great time. And it's really fun to see. It's fun to see the interaction from the high schools kids and the elementary and middle school kids.
Is it just back since COVID?
It's just back since COVID. I think they got two lessons in before everything shut down, and that's the last time they had it. So, yeah, it's great. It's really, really fun. Latoya was there last week on the first day, check it out.
Nice.
Yeah, it's very cool. Yeah, it is a really cool program. So, I'm saying this to anyone who's watching, but anyone should feel free to pop by Wednesdays from about 2:30 to 3:30.
Good.
That's it.
All right.
I would say, can I give a shout out to the, all the kids participating in Band Fest tonight? They hopefully will have a lovely time. I'm very sad I can't be there. I did the chorus concert last week, or the week before. I don't remember when, but it was really.
That was last week.
Last week, I don't know. But yeah, and that was lovely. So, I hope the Band Fest is equally as lovely tonight.
Great. I love Band Fest because you see like the progression.
I have a fourth grade class.
Yeah, you see that?
It would be very different, right?
When it could be at my high school, yeah.
Anything else? You guys want to jump into public comment? Okay. We'll start public comment. Please be respectful and talk about what is in the purview of the school committee and state your name and address when you come up to make comments. We'll do public comment of three minutes per person, so, or group. So whoever would like to go first, please go ahead.
Um, school committee, Mr. Chair, Jeff Sklar, Brooks Road. I just have a couple of questions, kind of, questions. The school committee put Dr. Ezy on leave, and I know at the last school committee, the chair said that you would not be releasing information about that. My question though is something that preceded the leave, and that was, you know, how long is that, how long's that leave for? That information, you know, predated any, any filings of any kind. So, I'd like if I could get an email, or a phone call, or response, just answering the question is, what's, what is the determination length of the leave? And if it's not determined, what will decide when that leave comes to an end? What is the criteria? And that's all for you again. That was before anything else came on. Second question is, on November 10th, school committee said there'll be a report, that you guys were able to get investigator, and the investigator would, you had to be in a hurry because the investigator had some time. And my understanding is that report would be done by January at the latest, or in March. So the question is, where's the report? What's the status on that? The community is, I think, entitled to an answer. I'd like now to make a public records request for all billing on that matter. So, you know, please consider the public records request as of today. Third is, third question is, Dr. T. Ms. Greka, back in November, you know, you recused from some votes, budget-related, SPED-related. But since then, some meetings you haven't attended when there were votes, and some meetings when there were votes, you've recused yourself, some you voted. Question is, I'd like an answer to this question. I think the public's entitled to know, school budget's a very important item, perhaps the most important the school committee does, certainly right up there. What is the reason for the, for the recusing? I think the community is entitled to know. And lastly, by my counter, I believe you have four open meeting law complaints at the moment, and there seem to be some very clear open meeting law violations, maybe some matters that, things been operating in secret that should be in the open. So I just ask that those practices be corrected, violations that have occurred, make amends for them, you know, put the information out to the public. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Nobody else? Okay. I don't have any emails for public comments, so that would be the end of public comments. So, next we can do the, the school budget hearing. So. Okay, so this is, we're officially opening the hearing. The school budget hearing needs to be opened, and I'm officially opening it now. So this is the Wayland School Committee FY24 budget hearing. And we'll just go through the slides. There's a good amount of slides. Maybe what we can do is, I can go through it, and then if there's questions, we can handle the questions after I get through all of it. So, I think that might be helpful. So the outline, in terms of how we're going to discuss things, would be, first I'll do the school committee mission, overview of the FY23 budget, talk about the budget process, talk about the proposed FY24 school operating budget, then their proposed FY24 school capital budget, go through the enrollment overview, FTE overview, and then we'll go into some of the unmet needs from this year and prior years. School committee mission, to support the mission of the Wayland Public Schools through the setting of policy, hiring and overseeing the superintendent, and recommending an appropriate budget that delivers a high-quality curricular educational program to the children entrusted to our care. The district mission statement, personal and civic responsibility, love of learning and empathy for others. These are the qualities that the Wayland Public Schools seek to instill in its students. At its core, our mission is to provide a rigorous and stimulating academic environment that promotes the acquisition of knowledge and skills. Yet we deem it equally important to nurture self-confident, collaborative, and conscientious individuals. We strive to create a climate where risk-taking is safeguarded, open expression is encouraged, and free association is protected. Our goal is to advance our students' growth into principled, informed, and capable students who will help guide a democracy that follows humanitarian principles in the global forum and shape a just society where individuals may reach their full potential. The goal for the school committee budget, to fully support the academic and social emotional growth of our students while respecting the fiscal constraints facing Wayland residents and the needs of other town departments. So, the current school year that we're in right now, that would be the FY23 fiscal year. In terms of an overview of the FY23 appropriation and budget, the total appropriation was 47.1 million. We had a significant increase in SPED out-of-district placements, and then the transportation that would be associated with those out-of-district placements. A year ago today, when we were, you know, finalizing the budget, there were, you know, some of the, these out-of-district placements were not exactly known, so they occurred after the 47.1 million appropriation was approved by us. We had, the increased expenses that occurred with SPED, we were able to use SPED prepay and circuit breaker funds to help the school district to help it handle that, that change. And during the current year, the current school year, we have about 44 out-of-district placements.
Those are ones that we're paying for, funding, right?
Yes, yes.
Not unilateral.
Right, sorry.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, no, that's a very good point. It's 44 out-of-district placements that the schools are, are paying for. You have to bear with me on this one, the writing's a little bit small, but, on this one, the budget process for FY24. So it starts with the town manager guidelines. It was level services and increased funding requests. And then in the fall, the superintendent and director of finance and operations met with the school committee members and the district leadership to identify the priority areas for the district goals and the areas of improvement. October, November timeframe, admin council, the SLT, they review the district goals and they take action steps and develop action steps. At, October, November, the admin council reviewed the budget process and submitted their budget needs. And then on December 14th, we all know December 15th is like, is that famous date here that we have, where the budget needs to be, the superintendent needs to bring their recommended budget to the school committee by December 15th each year, which is in the town, the town bylaws, I believe. So we had that meeting on December 14th. During January, the school committee meetings happened, a couple meetings, about one meeting a week, and some weeks we had more than one meeting to discuss the FY24 budget and to vote on it. In February, the town finance committee reviewed the overall town budget, including the schools, and we received some feedback from them and made various adjustments as needed. So this is the FY24 budget recommended by the superintendent that came to the school committee on December 14th. We can start out with, the FY23 budget was the 47.1 million. That was what was appropriated and voted on last year. The superintendent recommended an increase of about 2.8 million. So the FY24 superintendent recommended budget was 50 million, a little bit more than 50 million. So that was a 6% increase. One of the things we did here in terms of showing things, because at our, at our meeting Monday night, there was a comment that some of, there were some differences between what the FinCon presentation had. So, just to explain, the line under that of the plus utilities moved to unclassified of a million, one change that was made this year is the utilities for the schools were moved out of the school department budget, but to the unclassified section of the townwide budget. So just to make the comparison, for last year's budget, meaning fiscal year 23, and the fiscal year 24 budget comparison, apples to apples, the plus utilities line is added in here to show the adjusted comparable basis of about 51 million, a little more than 51 million.
And you want to say it doesn't include the COLAs?
Right, right, yeah. So the budget, all the information that we are presenting here and in the slides, it does not include the COLA increases for the fiscal year 24 school department budget because those decisions are still in process. There are no answers at that, at this point. And then, let's see, so then on January 24th, there were some adjustments that were, that were made to the budget. So, going from here, we have the superintendent recommended budget of the 50 million. The adjustments that were made, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong here, or Perry, correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe what happened was, in meetings with the town manager and the school department, there were some decisions to make some, you know, adjustments. So the school department proposed to the school committee that the adjustments that would be made to align with those conversations would be removing the full-day kindergarten for fiscal year 24 of the 450,000, and then also making the reduction for some proposed staff increases of 144,000. Those staff increases though, just to be clear, by taking those out, that does not mean that staff are, are being let go. That's, that's not what that means. Those staff increases were increases that were more like, you know, a point four, of someone who is getting a point four more, or getting a point two more. So I just want to be clear that that's not a staff, or multiple staff being let go. So then, we're, now we're at the end of January, so now the school committee is looking at the recommended budget of the 49.4 million. And then once again, I just added the utilities to show the adjusted comparable. And then we got to the end of February, and there were some more conversations and some additional proposed adjustments. Those proposed adjustments after conversations with the school department, which the school department then came to the school committee with some recommendations, those adjustments were proposal of a EL teacher and a local, local SPED teacher, reductions there. Now, these were enrollment-driven, new positions, where after talking between the school committee and the administrators, the feeling was that it was better to not necessarily fill, you know, a new position that had not been, been filled in terms of making a reduction. The feeling was it was better to do that than to have a reduction of educators who are already working in the district. So, those two reductions were made. And then the SPED transportation reduction of the 450,000 was made as well. On the SPED transportation reduction of 450,000, I just want to be clear that, and Tom, please also interrupt me here, or Perry, but on the SPED transportation reduction, the town, the state reimburses Wayland, or potentially will reimburse Wayland up to $350,000. Oh, $300,000, okay. $300,000. And then the other 150,000, what we've done is a proposal of a reserve fund, and, to the tune of 150,000, which was at last week when we voted to have that article funded to the tune of 150,000. So those are some of the things that would play into managing that, that reduction of 450,000. Does that cover it? Or, Tom? Okay. So that brings us to the finance committee's voted budget of 48.8 million. And, once again, the COLAs are not included in any of these numbers on this slide. So, the total increase is essentially the 1.6 million that you see there, and the components are contractual obligations for personnel, so this includes steps and lanes, longevity, other contractual obligations with compensation, and it also includes retirements, and it nets out staff exchange. So that increases about 1.1 million in the fiscal year 24 budget. Then there is some enrollment personnel changes, increasing staff driven by enrollment class size, that's 70,000. We have at the Children's Way, three Children's Way teachers that were moved over to the school district's operating budget as part of some of the changes that have been made with the Children's Way, the structure. Those are some changes that have been occurring over the past few years, and are helping the district to, you know, collaborate with, with all the schools, including Children's Way. So that's $180,000 increase. Then we have non-personnel contractual obligations, which includes increases in transportation. It also includes the SPED out-of-district tuitions and transportation related to that as well, and that increases about 244,000. So that brings us to the 1.6, and then once again, you know, just to make it comparable, we made an adjustment for the utilities to show the 2.7 million as the adjusted comparable basis. So, one of the factors of the budget is special education as a, a large driver in the increases. So the increase in the special education expense is about 48% when you compare fiscal year 24 to the fiscal year 23 budget. So that's an increase of 1.7 million. The fiscal year budget does not include any SPED prepays or circuit breaker rollovers. In the fiscal year 23 budget, we did have prepays and rollovers. So essentially what that means is, towards the end of closing out fiscal year 22, an account balance can be used to prepay or rollover, and there already was an existing circuit breaker amount there, which allowed us to prepay in the fiscal year 23 budget, which was incredibly helpful in managing our situation with our various out-of-district tuitions. Given that the account balances were used at that time and throughout the current school year for those costs, going into the fiscal year 24, we will not have those prepays or rollovers to assist us in the way it did last year, which is also part of the reason that the budget needs to account for those costs for fiscal year 24. The fiscal year 24 includes about 37 out-of-district placements, which is an increase from fiscal year 23, and.
Chris, can I just, the slide where Jess made a comment about.
44 versus 37. That's why you're confused.
Yeah.
Yep. So 44 is the current school year.
Is 22 to 23 school year?
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
And so the 37 is for the 23 to 24 school year?
Yes.
Okay, so we're actually losing.
It's actually going, going to go down.
But I think the point is that what we budgeted for, for FY23, was far less than 44.
I totally understand. I just couldn't reconcile those two numbers.
Totally understand, and it took me a couple times too, when, when that happened. And the other, to piggyback on your comment, even though the number went down to 37, tuition and transportation costs went up.
Went, right.
So, you know, the state did an increase of 14% on all private out-of-district placements.
Right.
And costs just went up. So even though we have, you know, a reduction in the number of the out-of-district placements, it doesn't necessarily correlate, you know, directly to the reduced, to a reduction in costs.
Yep. Yep, I just was trying to make sense of the 44 versus 37 in my head.
I'm going to say this again, because I think it's important for, so who's ever watching at home, in FY23, what we budgeted for was far less than 44.
Yes.
Students.
Right.
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 So that's, that's a big reason why the jump is so big.
And that was what went into the fiscal year 23 prepay and rollover being.
Right.
Exactly. Reduced to basically. Pay for them.
Nothing, yeah. Okay.
I think I'm good on that, yeah. But actually, no, this is fine, but I'm just going to make one statement, that on Monday night, I know you weren't able to make it, but I just want to say something that Dr. Cataldo said, that I think is really important, even though it's not necessarily on this slide. I want to repeat what she said, you know, she talked about, so we have these costs, but she also talked about, you know, the investment in programs like the language-based classroom, and investments like that in special education that are, are really critical, and that are happening, and that are really great. But, you know, those are the things that are really important, because then students can stay in the district and get the things that they, that they need.
Right.
So.
Yep.
And for the community, we're required to pay these costs. This is not a choice, this is not something that we're padding the budget, these are required costs.
Right, yeah. Okay, so the special reserve fund, so this is what I was talking about when we were talking about the 450,000 of transportation, and the state would reimburse up to 300,000, and so the $150,000 difference is addressed here. So there's an article, a town meeting to establish this, it allows schools to reserve funds that can be used in future years to pay without further appropriation for unanticipated or unbudgeted costs of special education, out-of-district tuition, transportation, and recovery high school, and recovery high school tuition. Will help offset costs in years that see significant special education cost increases. In years in which the special education costs are lower than budgeted, funds may be contributed to the reserve fund. So the finance committee voted to fund the reserve fund with 150,000 pending approval at town meeting, and then a few of you had a meeting last week to get this article together. Is that right?
We did.
Great. So this is a very long meeting.
Very draining.
Very draining.
Five minutes.
Like in five minutes, yeah.
I didn't even know.
I got an email, someone emailed me and said that they, they said, I tried to log in to watch the meeting, and then they said, but I might have just missed, and I saw like the timeline, it was like literally seven minutes after the meeting started. Broke back, I'm like, I'm pretty sure you missed it.
It was done by 4:08 or something.
Yeah. This is a really great, you know, this is something we've talked about for the past few years, some sort of a reserve fund, and it's a really great tool to help us manage, you know, costs that, you know, sometimes you just, you, you need to take care of them, and you don't always know when they're going to happen, but a reserve fund like this is a great tool. So this is great to see this, that we're going to have this this year, hopefully. The capital budget, so capital improvement requests for the FY24, district-wide fire, alarm control panels and smoke detectors, 188,000, replacement of the food service equipment, 100,000, and then the elementary math curriculum, materials and equipment, 400,000, for a total capital budget of 688,000. So I wanted to talk about math curriculum, because I feel like this is like something that is great news, and I kind of feel like sometimes with the budget process, you know, maybe we don't always take the time to like, really look at some of the great things that are happening, and this is, this is really wonderful. So we have, in our capital budget, a math curriculum, elementary math curriculum, $400,000, and it's materials and equipment. It's going to cover teacher and student materials, software, and professional development for the teachers. April of '22, a committee of teachers and administrators was formed to start the process and determine the programs to pilot. In February of '23, they started piloting three programs, Bridges, Illustrative, and Eye Ready, in all three elementary schools and at all grade levels, and so it was about 30 teachers piloting these programs. This May, the committee's going to reconvene with the piloting teachers, they're going to visit districts that are currently implementing the programs, and they're going to reach a final decision on exactly what direction they want to go in, so that in the upcoming school year, 23, 24 school year, the implementation of the math curriculum will occur in Wayland in grades K through 5. And I just realized as I'm reading through this, I should clarify, you know, prior to this, Wayland has had a home, you know, an organic type of program, and so now they'll be using this math curriculum, but I just wanted to take a moment to like, talk about it, because I think it's a great, it's, it's a really great progress, and great that we're having this in our, our budget for this year, so.
Has anybody seen the, any of the curriculum stuff coming home?
No.
I have, so.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so Illustrative has been coming home to my house, and it's, it makes sense to me, like, I look at it, and I'm like, oh, this makes sense to me, and it's different to hear a kid's perspective, right?
Yeah.
And I actually, that's the one program I know a little about, because I know people who use it, and one district in Maine, one of the top districts in Maine, uses it and just implemented it this year, and the teachers in the upper grades were like, eh, I don't love it this year so much, but one of the younger teachers in the younger grades said, it's really great, and as the kids grow with. kids grow with it, it'll be, like, more helpful to them." So it's just interesting to hear the perspectives...
Yeah.
On the different programs. I haven't seen Eye Ready or Bridges, but...
Yeah.
It was just kind of cool.
Well, that's good. Yeah, thanks for sharing that. That's, that's good to know. It's exciting. It's exciting.
Whatever they pick, I'm sure it'll be great.
I'm sure it will. Sure it will. This is the enrollment overview. I mean, you know, it, no real major, in terms of the projections into the future, no, like, really major, significant changes. Just, you know, some small movements, as you can see, you know, with additional students in some years, reductions in other years. But, you know, this projects out to 2031, and, you know, it's kind of challenging to make those predictions, so we'll see. And then this is, you know, just the upcoming years. So, looks like in 20, fiscal year 23, the actual was slightly higher than, wait, no, I'm sorry, the actual was lower than projected. And then for '24, we have projected around 27, 2,796 students, and then '25, a slight increase to 2,818 students.
And that middle school bump is why we have middle school FTEs in the budget?
Oh, okay.
This year's fifth grade class is a big class.
Yeah.
Say that again?
This year's fifth grade class is a big class.
Yes, and which, which was a big budget driver...
Right.
At the middle school for needing additional FTEs to cover those sections.
Yeah.
So the budget overview, 23 budgeted FTEs, 454. The actual ended up being 455. '24, we're looking at budgeted FTEs at 456.7. Always laughing.
I hate that. I'm like...
But it does make sense.
It does, when you look at the breakdown.
Unmet needs, all right. So, where do we start? Full-day kindergarten, unmet need. I think we've all talked about that quite a bit. I think one thing that came up the other night was that, you know, even during this past budget process, one of the ideas that came up, isn't that right, Tom, is like a phase in, maybe over three years, of full-day kindergarten, rather than trying to do it all in one year. I really hope that that's an idea that can get back on the radar next year, because I think it's a really great idea and a good way for us to get closer to that. You can see some of the other, some of the others. This is, oh, this is fiscal year '21, right?
The year before.
Unmet needs.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, you know, you can see we had journalism teacher, writing coach, had full-day kindergarten on that, maintenance projects, et cetera.
An SEL need.
SEL, yes. An SEL coach. Fiscal year '22, unmet needs, Spanish emergent TAs, interventionist, intervention specialist, behavior specialist, permanent subs. Those have all been deferred. '23, we had Director of Social Emotional Learning, full-day kindergarten is on there again, restorative justice training, building substitutes, campus life supervisor, so... So that's, that's everything. Do we have any community members who have questions?
I don't want that.
All right. No questions? Anything from the school committee?
You know, the only thing I'll say, because, hey, as we've talked about, the $450,000 cut for specialized transportation, we talked about being reimbursable for the state, but we do not know we will get reimbursed from the state.
Right.
I think we should just make that point. So, so while we have 150, I mean, we talked about 300,000 of it being reimbursable. So we have 150 that if it's voted at town meeting, we will be able to use from the Specialized Reserve Fund, but the $300,000 remains to be seen whether it will be reimbursed for the state, from the state, or we need to find it in the budget. So, that was my only problem.
Great. Yes?
I actually did have a question. I didn't think I was going to be able to ask it, so I kind of held it.
Yeah.
I saw on a list of unmet needs that you were looking for permanent sub positions. If you were to hire a permanent sub, would it reduce the cost of substitute teachers coming in on an absentee basis? How would that impact the budget?
Do you want me to address that?
Yeah, that would be a great question, please.
It's funny, because I always question permanent subs.
So these are building substitutes. And so they're, they're full-time positions. They are in the WISA bargaining unit, and their job essentially is to just plug in as needed in the building. So they cost more than the equip, like, on a per DM basis, it costs more to be paying a building substitute than it would cost to pay just hiring somebody from the outside. Right now, we pay $85 per day for an outside substitute. Next year, we're going up to $100 per day. One can make an argument, we, we need it to go up for a while, so we're trying to move that up. But $100 per day is still less than we would be paying a building substitute. So a building substitute, depending upon where they fall on the WISA scale, could be making up next year. I'm trying to remember what the top of the scale is. This year, the, the highest, the top of the WISA scale is $27.10 an hour. Building substitutes make an extra dollar per hour because of the nature of their job. So $28.10 per hour is what we would be paying a building substitute this year, times seven hours, whatever that math is, is more than the $85 we're paying. So from a financial standpoint, the, the cost of a building substitute isn't the full cost, because it is going to reduce what you need to pay for substitutes coming in from the outside. You also get, you have one person who's in the building, who knows the building, who's able to provide much higher, well, we were able to attract some very high-quality substitutes from outside. Having somebody in the building who knows kids, who knows the staff, who knows the building, is going to be able to do that more seamlessly than somebody coming in from the outside, particularly when you get into situations where someone might be out for multiple days. It just creates much more consistency. So there's a big teaching and learning argument for it. Financially, it's, it's not a wash, it is more expensive.
But can that 100,000 be offset by what you typically pay that substitute teacher coming in to replace them 40 hours a week, or 30 hours a week, or whatever it is?
So what we could, so with a substitute teacher, so it's $85 a day, if we're, if we're hiring a substitute teacher for a longer period of time, a long-term substitute, usually a building sub is not going to do a long-term substitute role, so we're going to pay that person independently. And those people get paid more. So the financial offset would be, we have two different lines that pay for subs, for substitute teachers. There's a reg ed substitute line and then a specialized substitute line. So one could theoretically say, well, we would, we could reduce the regular ed substitute line by X amount of money if we hired building substitutes. So you could get some offset total savings in the budget, but again, it would still be more expensive to hire a building substitute.
Thank you.
Yep.
Isn't it true that we were finding that it was hard to hire substitutes? And, like, at the middle school, Betsy Gavron was filling in, like...
Yeah, that's what, so what...
That's what drove it.
What ends up happening, so there's another way that we can, we can cover subs, and that is, for example, at the middle school, one thing that, that happens with some regularity is that if I'm a math teacher and Tom's an English teacher and Tom happens to be out, if I've got a prep period at a time when he's, would be teaching a class, I can go and I can cover his class. And per the WTA contract, I get paid then $35 per class for covering his class. So that's another way that we can pay. That's more money than we would be paying a substitute from outside, but we have difficulty getting enough subs from outside to come in, particularly at the middle school level. The elementary tends to scoop up all the substitutes. And then what can end up happening is if they're not able to find internal coverage, then Betsy Gavron or Megan Maines, the principal or assistant principal, will end up going and covering the classes, because we need to have, we need to have an adult with the kids. So trying to find that coverage internally, that was certainly a challenge before the pandemic. I've never heard about a district where that's not a challenge, finding enough substitute teachers. The pandemic absolutely exacerbated that challenge. So we end up having more, it's, it's harder to find that internal coverage than it was pre-pandemic.
Do you have a question?
Yes. Dobie King, a couple of quick questions on the substitutes. Are the permanent subs and building subs, are they part of bargaining unit?
They are. They're part of the WISA bargaining unit. So they are full-time employees that we hire.
Okay. And then the prior slide, you had a line item for restorative justice for 15K. I was just wondering if you could give a little information about that? Like, is that for teachers, students, and 15,000, or who's also conducting that? Is it someone outside the district? And is that funded by grants or part of tax dollars?
So it didn't happen?
Right, for, without coming...
So the idea, and I'm trying to remember the details, I believe this was for training, I'm not sure if it was, it was some combination of training and/or materials. So the idea, restorative justice, the idea that when, when kids do things that we don't want them to do, when they break the rules, oftentimes, there's a punitive, you get punished in some way for doing that. The idea of restorative justice is rather than being punitive, to try to maybe bring two kids together who had some sort of altercation, and have them restore the, the relationship with each other. Or if a student has done something inappropriate in the classroom, there might be an opportunity to kind of restore the relationship with other kids in the classroom. And so the idea here, if I'm remembering correctly, was, I think, either to get some curriculum materials around that, or some professional development around that. That ended up not moving forward. This is also connected to a larger theme at the elementary level, which is around the social-emotional curriculum. We have, right now, at our elementary level, each teacher is doing social-emotional work with their students on a regular basis, but it doesn't look consistent from classroom to classroom sometimes and school to school. Responsive Classroom and Open Circle are the two different programs that we've had historically. One of the two of them, and I always get confused which one, that the organization doesn't exist anymore, so there's no opportunity for us to refresh or buy new materials. You were...
Open classroom.
Open classroom, thank you. Open classroom, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And so there's a real, there's a need for us as a, as a district, longer term, social, emotional, mental health needs are, are, they existed before COVID. COVID has exacerbated them. But really thinking about how to bring in a more formalized program, elementary, middle, and high, and things that, you know, work vertically, I think is, is a real priority, not something that we have the bandwidth or the, the budget to be doing right now, although we've started to have some conversations around that internally. So I think that restorative justice training, part of the idea there was to try to get at that to a certain extent, that piece of the larger social-emotional curriculum and needs.
Is that something we can pursue then for the next school year?
It's not in the budget for next year. So you mentioned the word grants. There can be some interesting grant opportunities to pursue around that. And I have mixed emotions about pursuing grants. I really, really like the idea of pursuing grants to accomplish something we've already identified as a need that we want to accomplish. Sometimes the tail can wag the dog a little bit, and we see that there's a grant opportunity, we say, "Oh, well, let's go for that." You get grants, you just can't say, "Well, now we need to build a program to match the grant." So I'm a big fan of, we have a need, now let's go and find funding opportunities to try to meet that need. So it's possible that there could be some grant opportunities to do something like this. But I would, I would hope that, that the process is really identifying needs with, what do we want to try to do? What are we trying to accomplish? And then, what can help us do that? And are there some grant opportunities to do that? But it's not in the FY24 budget.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? No? Okay. So that would be it for the budget hearing.
Yeah, you have to close it.
Okay, so I'm now closing the budget hearing?
I just remembered, because I have, like...
Can I apply my PowerPoint?
Yeah.
Yeah, go for it.
However, we also need to vote on the final number of the budget.
Before we do that, can I ask one question? In the, in the document, in the folder, there's this budget book draft, and it's something that we do every year. We used to mail it out to families way back when. People used, every resident used to get a copy of the budget book. Then we changed it to an online version, and it's always been posted online. And so I worked on it a little bit. I just didn't have time to finish it. And, but basically, what it's meant to do is tell the story that Chris just gave. So I wondered if, I just want to know what people want to do about it. I am happy to finish it, I just didn't by tonight. So it can either be delegated, and I'll just finish it, I can bring it back next time, because, you know, town meeting's not till the first week of May, so we have time to post it. Maybe that's what I should do, just bring it so you can all read through it.
Oh, I was going to be okay with delegating.
Oh, okay.
I'm finding their way.
Well, someone, someone should read through it. So I'm hap, you can delegate it to me, that's fine, and then we can just pick someone that will just proof it, because I just, I would, I would feel more comfortable if someone, like, proofed it and made sure they were happy with it. So whatever you guys want, or I can bring it back next time. I'm just, I just, I couldn't get it done with everything else, so.
I'm happy to proof if we want to go and proof it, and I'm happy to bring it back next time, if we want to go and bring it back next time.
Right. Well, what if you want to?
Jess?
I'll step outside, too, stop voting.
Oh. Oh, right, okay.
But I said it while you were here, because I didn't know...
I've done it in the past with her, so.
Yeah, yeah. So you don't care what we do, is what you're saying?
I am not deciding, and certainly don't care.
Okay. Jess, do you have a preference? Do you want it to come back to the next meeting, or do you want it delegated?
I think that delegating is more efficient.
Okay. So we'll delegate it. Jeannie, can, you're, you're okay with wrapping it up and then having someone proof it with you?
Yes. And my idea is just to make sure you're all good with this, is I'm, it's essentially going to kind of walk through a lot, like what Chris did, because that's usually what it does.
So it's what's here, but just...
Yeah, inverbally.
Yes.
It's like a way to market it to the community.
Sounds great.
To speak. And Tom?
Yes?
Usually we have current artwork in there, and it seems like this had some current artwork in it, so might I email you and get the...
I'll share it with you immediately.
Okay, great, so.
Erin, do you want to do the proofing with Jeannie?
Sure. Happy to do some of it.
Great. So, there we go. Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
No guarantee it's going to get done the next day or two, but...
That's okay.
But next week.
I'm not going anywhere.
We have two weeks, right, Jeannie?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you, guys.
So I think we just need a motion for...
A number?
A vote for the final budget number. I wrote it down, if you want to...
I was going to say, did someone...
I just read it off. That's from the slide.
Yeah, it's this number. All right, I can move that one.
All right, go for it.
So do you want to move it?
You have it. You might as well.
I'm going, I move that we approve the revised recommended budget of 48,803,195.
For FY24?
For FY24. Good. Yes.
Second. Okay. All is in favor?
Aye.
It's going to be a roll call.
How it does? All right. Harry?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Jeannie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
One.
Recusal, abstention? Recusal.
One recusal. Okay.
So we should get that one.
Yes. All right. Well, thanks, guys, for tolerating my
Well?
budget talk.
I'm impressed that it came out to an even dollar amount with no cents. Usually we see like thirty-four cents, twenty-three cents, ninety-seven cents.
We rounded out.
Great, Tom's precision.
No, we didn't.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that would surprise me.
It's exact.
Tom doesn't round.
Good job.
Not even.
That's right.
That's true, that's who we are.
Okay, great, way down to the penny. But this would be a really good time to say thank you again.
You're welcome.
For everything. Thank you, Harry, as well.
Yeah, of course.
All the hard work on the budget, thanks.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
And thank you, Jeannie, for the PowerPoint presentation and everything. So. Okay, so, Harry, want to take it away? The next?
I would like to start by turning things over to my esteemed colleague, Director of Finance and Operations, Tom LaFleur, to talk about the discussion and vote to approve the 2023 submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Building Authority Core Program.
Thank you. Talk to Graham. In your packet, you'll find the draft of the SOI, the Statement of Interest for 2023. As, as some have noticed today, this is a repeat of about approximately a year ago. If you're not selected to the program, you have to reapply, and that's where we are at. So here's the submission. There's actually a document in the folder with the exact verbiage of the motion that needs to be made.
It's funny because I looked up the one we did last year because I was confused why we were doing it again, and it's this exact same form.
It is.
Are we looking at the, the draft SOI?
Yes.
Well, now you're looking at, aren't you looking at the required form, the template? That's what you want us to do?
Yeah, the vote template.
Okay, because I can't open the other one. Wait, now I can.
We just have to, we just have to read that, right?
Yeah, the motion has to be exact or they'll, they'll just throw us out.
Do you remember what the timeline was for this, Tom? Like, when will we get an update on our standing?
We have only got the update in December.
Okay.
For the last one. Usually it's earlier than that. The funding that they have is not going as far anymore with construction inflation.
So should we just do the motion?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I was.
Sorry, I'm having issues with the internet.
I don't know if it matters or not, but the last item on page six of the SOI, number three in the list there, states that town meeting is held in the fall and the spring, and we're really getting away from fall town meeting. So I don't know if you want to update that or not.
Oh, yeah, I noticed that too.
Okay. So if there's nothing else, we just need to vote?
Okay, I can make the motion. So I move, I'm just gonna read it, right, Tom? It, the thing in the square box?
Correct.
I move, resolved, having convened in an open meeting on March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Wayland, in accordance with its charter bylaws and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated, who, what's the name?
March fifteenth.
Dated March fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the Clayville Hill School located at?
Adams Lane, Wayland.
Is that the address?
I wanna say it's twelve, but I'm not sure about Adams Lane.
Located at Adams Lane, Wayland, Mass, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Tom, is there anything to say here?
I think it's just gonna state it into the core program.
Sorry?
Instead of description, the priority checked off on the Statement of Interest. Hold on, I'll go.
Oh, 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 that's, that's that thing.
Yeah, we should check these out ahead of time.
It's those numbers that you checked, right? On the thing?
Priorities two, four, and five.
Okay, so let me go back here. In the future, priorities two, four, and five, and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts Building, School Building Authority is in no way guarantees the acceptance of the approval of an application, the awarding of a grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority or commits the, the.
Town of Wayland.
Yeah, the Town of Wayland to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Everyone's in favor, no one's opposed, no one's abstaining, so the motion passes.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, this has to go to the Select Board now.
We should probably fill out the words for this. Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Next, I wanted to highlight some district-wide events that have been going on last week and this week. And for many of these events, this is the first time that we've been able to do these back in person with really large groups, so they're really exciting, really celebratory events. So last Thursday, March ninth, the elementary math team hosted Family Math Night at Locur, and this is for all three of the elementary schools. There were about four hundred and seventy-five students, parents, and guardians in attendance, so tons of people showing up.
Wow.
Parking was at a premium. The night was filled with a variety of board games to encourage strategy acquisition and brain development, math-backed bingo, logic games, and geometry exploration. Students also tested their estimation skills by guessing the amount of items in a variety of estimation jars. Students were excited to see their friend Gigi from ST Math in attendance to take pictures in the photo booth. They went to thank principals who served pizza and cookies, staff who volunteered to help with the games, students who ran bingo in the math literacy room, Lynn Featherstone, who works in our central office, and the math coaches, Ella Lazen, Marie Brigham, Emily Shaw, and then the math interventionist, Mike Rosenbaum, who did a tremendous amount of work, and Michelle Kroll, although she didn't list herself here, I'm going to list her. She was the one who was behind the scenes. I mean, lots of people did lots of work. She did a lot of work to help make this happen. It was super successful, just a wonderful event to be.
Was she Gigi?
She was not, she was, I saw her and Gigi in the same place at the same time.
I know who Gigi was.
What does Gigi look like?
It's a penguin.
The penguin.
Oh.
So when you solve the puzzle in ST Math, Gigi like runs across the screen, and so that's like how you know that you've finished it. Or Gigi has to go like do things. So Gigi will sometimes make appearances at schools. Sometimes Gigi's a little bit taller, a little bit shorter. Gigi was on the shorter side. Penguin stretch, that happens, that's a known, that's a known fact. And then within the performing arts, a number of really exciting events. So last Tuesday, March seventh, Wayland Sings happened in the high school auditorium. Coral students from all five schools joined together to perform for a standing-room-only crowd. Special thanks to Custodians and Facilities Department for assisting in the movement of coral risers and sound shells, and to the Wayland High School Student Sound Tech and Design Team for the beautiful lighting and sound. The program opened with all groups joining together in the song Lift Every Voice and Sing, followed by each ensemble performing an individual selection, and ended with combined voices singing Ain't Gonna Let Nobody Turn Me Around. The Thirty-Fourth Annual String Jamboree was supposed to happen yesterday, and it didn't. So instead, it is happening tomorrow in the Field House, and that's gonna have four hundred and eighty-two string musicians from grades three through twelve performing a selection by grade. And then the entire ensemble will join together to perform a festival rondo and a string jam twinkle. Thank you again to the, to the custodial staff in advance for their support and for parent volunteer assistance throughout the event. Right now, or I guess in a few minutes, Band Fest is gonna happen. That's grades four through twelve, student musicians performing tonight in the Field House. Each grade-level ensemble is performing a selection, followed by a combined performance of Above and Beyond by James Swearingen. An additional thank you to the custodial staff and band parents for their assistance in this enormous undertaking. I'm missing band, I can't remember if it was Band Fest or String Jamboree. Last year, it was like the first big event that finally could happen in person without any, you know, like attendance restrictions. And I remember going to it, it was just absolutely heartwarming. Kids do, you know, an amazing job, hearing them all perform all at the same time, just wonderful. And so the Finding Choral Arts Department is grateful to administration and each of the buildings for their support of the program. COVID was extraordinarily challenging for coral and band programs. It is really heartening to see these programs rebuild. These festivals are inspirational displays of the scope and sequence of our programs. Congratulations to all of the music staff on preparing the students for these amazing displays of teamwork, skill, perseverance, and collective musicianship. So wonderful things happen.
Yeah, that's great.
They do a really good job.
They do such a good job.
The String Jamboree.
Yeah.
I have not fond memories of the String Jamboree.
And it does show the progress from like third grade, you know, like you.
Yeah, it starts with eh eh eh, and then the honors like chamber.
I would try to watch, and I'd have the other one running in circles. And I'm like, go over there, be quiet.
There's always a few like unattended children, you know, like scampering around. But we get them all home, buddy.
Like every good guy.
Clear the other. Absolutely. I wanted to provide some updates on where we are in leadership hiring processes, and I actually have a request to make of the School Committee. So the Happy Hollow Principal Search, they are just about, I believe, to interview their first-round candidates and choose finalists. So the charge to that committee is to, to pick at least three finalists to move forward to a final round. So I think they will be doing that within the next week to week and a half. They will be identifying those finalists. The Wayland Middle School Interim Principal Search, I am leading that search, and we have our interviews later this week, Thursday and Friday, and potentially going into Monday. And so I should have some more information about that coming up in the near future. The Interim Assistant Superintendent position, that committee is getting formed. Allison Mizuguchi is leading that charge for the first round. So they are in the process of forming that committee. They have not done any work yet on like reviewing applications. In fact, the applications are still open. They're open through, I believe, Friday evening to continue to receive applications. The Interim Director of Student Services, I'm gonna be leading that. I should be able to be finishing up the middle school interim principal search right around the time as the Director of Student Services search will, will be really getting going. So I'm planning to post that position probably tomorrow. And this is where I have a request of the committee. Interim Director of Finance and Operations, I would like to post that position tomorrow as well. And per policy, I can't remember which policy it is, but the School Committee needs to form a screening committee or they need to designate me to form a screening committee. So I'm asking you if I can move forward with forming a screening committee. I'd like to have at least one school committee member be a part of that screening committee. And then we'll, we'll post that, and then we'll move forward with that process.
Okay, yes, we should say, good, forming committee.
Yeah.
Do you want to vote?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't, I don't think so.
Who's gonna run that one? You are.
I am planning, I'm planning to run that, yes. I'm planning to run that. I haven't figured out all the details of who's gonna be on that one, but I plan to run that.
I'm happy to be on it. I was on the last one, though, so I totally, and I know, you know, there are other people who are gonna be here longer than I am, so if you guys want to be on.
I'm feeling a little like busy right now at school committee stuff, to be honest. I would really like to be on it and, because I will be here. But I'm just trying to figure if I have any more minutes to give at this point. So I think I will pass.
What are you planning on doing that, Perry? When's that when, you're posting it tomorrow?
Hosting it tomorrow, so we'll probably want to have a posting up for at least two weeks, and then things kick in, so. Maybe have like the first meeting right at the end of March with the committee, start looking at applicants, pick people to interview, maybe that first week of April. I think is the timeline I'm probably thinking about.
Well, do we have to make a decision right now? Jeannie, if you're happy to do it, I'm happy to do it, see what happens? Because we don't have to appoint the person, right? You do, right? But do we?
I think the School Committee, this committee should have someone on a committee, on a, on a.
Involved.
Hiring committee, I believe the School Committee needs to appoint someone.
I think what Erin's saying is we can wait till March fifteenth to decide which.
We have another meeting.
It's March twenty-ninth. If you could figure that out sooner rather than later.
But today's the fifteenth.
Right.
Yeah, today's the fifteenth.
I think I would prob, and there's a chance that I'll want to pull that committee together before the next School Committee meeting.
Yeah. I, I, with my work commitments, there's no way I can participate. So I would say either Jeannie or Erin, whichever.
But I don't care. I, I don't, I don't need to do it, so, I mean.
I just don't know what, I know, but I don't know what we're gonna have for a timeline. So that's what I'm hoping, to kind of be closer to like a.
Timeline in terms of how many meetings?
Yeah, like kind of when and.
Oh, so Perry, let's do this. What if, what if, what if, once you figure, let's just say it's Erin or me, and then once you figure out the exact schedule, we can just see if, if it works for Erin.
Is that okay?
Yeah, let's do that, because I think in terms of the committee deciding who would participate, everyone's okay with it being either Jeannie or Erin, right?
Yeah, great.
Okay, and then we'll just.
Perfect, yeah, okay, all right.
Go perfect.
So we'll wait to hear from you.
I think is my.
Can we have Tom, who you have as successor? I thought he should participate in this.
I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Perry.
Absolutely.
That's great, thanks. Okay. Next, we have financial matters, discussion and review of the FY23 budget versus actual to date. That sounds like a, is that a Tom?
Sounds like what?
Tom.
Sounds like a Tom.
Fun for Tom?
Lots of fun.
It's highlighted, isn't it?
So the committee has three reports in its folder.
Oh, because we have it.
First being a budget to actual, it's really a year-to-date report out of Munis, and what I've done is doctored it up just a bit. I dumped this to Excel and immediately calculated the payroll encumbrances. This is my plan, that you'll have those until July first, putting fiscal here, so we should be able to punch out more frequent reports very easily in this format. So it's literally the same format. I did create a summary sheet in the front. There are a few negatives in there, but there are general entries pending with the town. They're still trying to close last month before they enter those. You can see we're tracking really tight right now. Either encumbered or spent is ninety-eight point seven percent of this year's budget, but that includes all payroll right through the end of the year.
Right, so, so what this is showing is that as of today, we spent, as this says, that at the end of the year, we will be at ninety-eight point seven-one percent of our budget.
Right.
Right.
Plus any extra spending due to come.
So this first page is a summary of all the accounts?
Each department.
Each department?
And then it goes in detail.
So it shows, so, all right, so available is what's left for the rest, the total available, but it is what's left to get through the year.
And you've encumbered the personnel, so we shouldn't really see changes in that, but non-personnel may or may not be encumbered at this point.
Correct. We will see some changes because I'm, I'm looking at revolving funds and grants, not a rebalance. So there'll be some slight changes, but you can see on that summary sheet, Locur, athletics is upside down because we got transfer that coach pays that had been paid over the revolving fund.
Oh, I was gonna ask him about that. So what is that? You have to, the athletics, you just haven't transferred them yet?
All of them were charged to the budget when they should have been charged to the revolving fund. So we'll make that change. So there's definitely ongoing mandates to be done with this on almost daily basis now. So we get the, I'm more concerned that you're okay with the format.
Yeah.
I think what was happening in the past is you were getting quarterly reports that took an unbelievable amount of time to produce, and they were already stale by the time you got the data. We can make this available almost on demand now. And you'll have full payroll encumbrance in setting July first, so it will be accurate.
I think this is great, especially the first page.
The other two reports are something I've created in other districts. I think what I've seen, personal observation, is administrators and school committee members struggle with revolving funds and grants, especially the grants that roll from one year to the next. We don't have the revenue on an expenditure report. We don't have the balance of a revolving fund. So I've created this template in other places, and I've put our data, Wayland's data into this now. And I'm hopeful it'll, it'll be useful to you.
So, yeah, we, I, this is something new. We've never had the grant report before. But I had a question, can a grant be negative? Because.
Yes.
It can. How does that work?
The payroll's attached to it, especially when you like the sped two forty, you get two of them running at the same time. They might have put a PO in there on the wrong one. We'll rebalance that and close out the twenty-two grants. I think that's one of them. And the sped 240 grant for the 22 grants upside down with $2,600. Again, I have a good amount of journal entries sitting downstairs in the finance department at the town waiting to be put in.
So what you're saying is that by the end of the fiscal year, there shouldn't be any negative balances in that? Okay, well, I was just curious. I didn't know how you could have a negative balance on a grant.
And it's the same thing with the special ed out of district tuition. So we set the budget now to zero. And as soon as a PO is adjusted because a particular student has a change in services, it'll go negative and we'll have to move that over to circuit breaker.
So that, actually, there's another question I had. So I was surprised in looking at the special ed that we weren't over budget yet, but I know, I think I just answered my own question because we're not through the year. I was wondering where the circuit breaker was. Had you, you haven't applied that.
Well, the circuit breaker's here in the revolving funds.
I saw that. Does it transfer, do you transfer it over to the budget when you need it? Is that how it works?
No, we move the actual expense over. I can't move cash between funds.
Oh. So you take the expense out of the operating fund and put it over the revolving?
If I'm overshot on the budget by 10,000, for example, we'll take that open PO and transfer 10,000 over to over to the revolving.
Oh, isn't that interesting?
The circuit breaker shows a big negative on there, but we haven't collected all the revenue.
Because it comes in quarterly, right?
What we have due from the state total for the year is 727,000, which we only collected half. So that will come out.
Yeah.
Is that 240 cents? It's on the second page.
It's not on the grant, it's on the special ed.
Gotcha.
Wait, Tom, where is that again? 30? I know I saw it before.
You're on a special revenue fund report. It's 3501, it's on the second page.
The second page? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, I knew I saw it.
God, that's what you're talking about.
So that shows you've only collected, yeah. I'm sure that's how it works.
So the intent of these two reports is actually two-fold. One, more information. But I think I've struggled in the past in various districts with the administrators that are actually responsible for the grant. So this gives them a nice picture right across the board. So my intent internally is to, and we are, I have already started updating these weekly, is to share this out with all the administrators involved. So they have a up-to-date. They don't have the ability to run a canned report that shows cash balances and revenues and what's left. Especially now we don't have payroll encumbrances going 100%, so.
This is great. These reports are great. Thank you for doing this.
So if I were looking at this to see year-to-date, I think what would worry me are the school committee expenses, which are the legal expenses.
Correct.
And do I remember you telling me that that's not even really up-to-date, the bills?
If I had to guess, I would add a six figures to that.
Would add six figures to that.
That negative 80 was, I know we got a bill for 28 the other day that's not in here.
Why are the special ed legal fees included in school committee?
I can't answer that. I think it's one of those things that's been there. And I don't know if it was to control it.
I don't know either, but it's been, ever since I've been on the committee, the legal fees have always been like that.
Yeah, the school committee.
The state function code on the account's actually correct, so when we do the end-of-year report, it'll go to the correct place.
Yeah. I was just curious.
I would like to see it go to special ed only because they're, you know, they should be opening up their own purchase orders and managing their own budget.
Yeah. And, right.
I think in the past, I think in the past it might have gone to special ed. The special ed.
Well?
Yes, because I think they come in differently from what we have, right?
It's on one bill.
Really?
So they gotta sit there and parse it out.
Really? No, I thought it came in as two bills, okay. I must remember.
So would you recommend that we move it in the special ed?
If it was my decision, I would move it, yes.
Makes sense.
Yeah. Well, I just wonder if that's something we should consider doing.
We can just adjust the account structure and then move it over there, that's easy.
I think we should move it.
Just do a clean break for 24.
Yeah, just start on 24.
Yeah.
What do you go for? Yeah?
That makes sense.
Because it also sort of suggests that wouldn't the school committee sort of see the invoices if it were?
Do we see any legal invoices?
I think we see some of them in terms of the retainer line.
It's on one bill and it comes in from what we have.
Oh, so that's why we don't see the special ed ones, all right.
So then how, is it possible to parse it out, Tom?
It's itemized by, I think, attorney and provides some detail in terms of what was done. It's hard.
It's something in almost every district, it stays with the superintendent because there are privacy concerns with some of those invoices. So I don't know exactly, they don't pass my desk per se. But usually it's kind of sanitized at the superintendent level and we get just the simple front page.
Because we do split it out under, if you go to the detail, we do split it out, it's just all under us.
Yeah. Yeah, I would say 24 should be moved to the special ed section of the budget.
I think I have one more question, Perry. Oh, this is a really silly question, but I just happened to notice there's a lot of custodial overtime. And a lot more than we budgeted before. Why?
Some of that will be reimbursed by shots. I've had people here around the clock when the pipes broke and.
Oh, yeah, makes sense. I mean, I was thinking back to COVID when we used to have a lot of overtime.
There still is. I mean, people that go out and are covering with overtime. We've been paying the custodians from the library to cover some of our, some of our shifts.
You mean the town light?
Right. The town employee has been working for the schools to help cover as well. So keeping the staff full and healthy is becoming a task in itself. Unless any time, you know, we saw it yesterday or this morning, they were here early for snowing just to get all the locks cleaned up and the schools ready for children.
Then my last question, sorry I have so many. On the revolving funds, the hockey revolving fund? I noticed that there's no revenue in there yet. Right?
Actually, that's interesting because he reached out to us yesterday to move it from the Unipag. Which just hasn't been booked yet, it is coming up.
So there is revenue. Okay. I just was worried, sorry.
Did pay a fee significantly higher than the $300 athletic?
No, I know, but I just didn't know if we were collecting it or I just didn't know how we were paying for hockey. That's my question.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
A lot of the funds are coming in through that Unipag portal. We haven't been moving them very often. So that's something I get adamant about at least weekly that stuff gets transferred over and if it's been monthly. It just becomes very difficult to operate. I mean, he reached out to us yesterday. The timing's unbelievable, huh? To get the hockey money to go over.
So, Tom, do you think that we can get these reports periodically now, now that you're not here?
I don't want to speak for the superintendent's office. I think it's always been something we're ready to provide weekly. And what they want to share is between you and them.
Well, I guess, so Perry, I guess we used to get quarterly updates somewhere we work, budget versus actual. And this is, this is the first one we've seen in a really long time, so it would be nice to get them all regular.
I'm happy to provide you all with whatever information you think is gonna be helpful.
I mean, just like having it at the meeting like this is fine.
Susan used to keep her.
Yeah, she'd do like a quarterly.
Every quarter, every quarter.
I think the big one is for now problematic because we, between Joyce and I, we probably put in 50 hours to get those encumbrances calculated and put in. What I'm hoping is we're actually gonna be able to punch a menu item and produce this right out of UNIS. My intent, and UNIS can be difficult with reports. And we're doing actually really well here at the school level. I don't, I put things in place in other places to push reports at the departments and the schools because I know they're run correctly. So I found a lot where they're making business decisions on poor information and we could be on a bad path very quickly.
Right.
So I tell you, some, I did individual reports for every school every week just to make sure that that wasn't the UNIS.
Well, I'm not really asking for anything, I just thought we should have it periodic.
Like quarterly?
Yeah. I just feel like since we're responsible for the budget, we should know where we are.
Absolutely.
And if you wanted, you know, monthly, every other meeting or something as we head towards the end of the school year, you'd prefer it more often than this. It sounds like his loss is not hugely burdensome for you.
Well, these, we've been updating weekly already. This one is a beast. I was also a little concerned we're gonna make payroll without the balance of the year. So I manually calculated the whole thing. But that'll be automated in July, so. I actually have that functionality working in UNIS now. But we found out while we were setting it up that the way we've been doing payroll adjustments is not exactly correct. And it's gonna cause a big problem in June. So I'm gonna defer this till we flip the year. And then we'll just turn it on, we should be good.
Okay. Great.
Thanks, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks. All right. Discussion voting to approve the grants.
Is this a meeting?
This is Michelle.
That was all George from.
From the last meeting?
February.
I bet your paddles on Michelle.
Okay.
Well, I guess what we can do is, well, what we can do is, does anyone have any questions? We could push this to the next meeting if you guys would prefer. That would be funny.
I didn't know that I needed to be ready for this, but I mean, I can, these are three grants that we've received right by the end. Is this just the school committee approving?
Just to prove to accept the funds?
Just to have to accept it, yeah. So if committee members don't have questions after reading over it and they're good with it, then we can move forward with a vote.
If you have questions, I can do my best to try to answer them.
But what are we reading here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see anything.
This is the last, yes, it was deferred.
Would it be in our drive from what meeting?
February 8th.
Yeah. It said February 8th.
It's not in there.
How was it launched for, maybe it wasn't, I don't think it was launched for.
Well, you know what? We'll just skip over it and we'll do it at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
No worries.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure. Okay. So we'll move on to administrative matters. At the last meeting, so school committee communication. So at the last meeting, I had, in the beginning of the meeting, I made a statement and what I was thinking about is perhaps as a committee, we should look at it and send it as an email. I made a statement that was like at the beginning of the meeting, an opening statement. So what I did is I typed it up for all of us to look at. And if you guys are okay with it, we can send it as an email to families and staff from the school committee. And the reason that, you know, I put it together as an email is because, you know, I think there's just been some questions about maybe some sort of a communication from the school committee. And I recognize that, you know, people don't always get to watch the school committee meetings or attend the school committee meetings. So I thought perhaps what I said at the last school committee meeting at the beginning of the meeting would be good to send out as an email. The only thing that's different between what I said and the statement you can see is that second to last paragraph where I was thanking the administrative team for all their hard work. But other than that, the statement is what I read, except that I changed the word "I" to "we" since it's coming from the group. So if you guys are okay with that, I will have someone send it out from the, on Messenger, from the entire committee.
Has Kevin looked at this?
Yes, yeah.
And he's comfortable with this idea?
He approved it.
And then, so I guess what is our purpose in sending it at this point? Is it just, because I feel like we're just kind of still saying we have nothing to share with you. So I'm just like, is that even?
Yeah, no, that's a very fair question. I totally get what you're saying. I think it stemmed from, quite frankly, a lot of people were emailing me, there's a lot of emails, or I would run into people and they would sort of say like, kind of say, you know, it's very frustrating to not have communication. And I totally understand what they're saying. And I completely sympathize with how they're feeling. However, as we also know, it's also challenging, right? Communication in terms of different things. So that's why at the last meeting, I made this statement at the beginning of the meeting. But then after hearing more people say, since the last meeting, oh, it's frustrating, I realized, you know, people don't really get the chance to listen to our meetings or attend our meetings. So perhaps as an email, it would be more helpful.
I'm just wondering if it's gonna bring more frustration than the goal of communicating clearly, that's all. That's all, that's where my head is with it, that's all.
See, I have the opposite thought because I think that it's really important that we do like keep some communication going, even if it doesn't say that we're doing anything. Yeah, I mean, sorry, not that we're not doing anything, but we can't do anything. I just feel it's important that like it's not just a whole, that's me. So I like the idea.
Whatever you guys want, works with me. I just sort of felt like it was worth all of us talking through it.
Can I, the phrase "our hands are tied", can we change that phrase?
Yeah, if you have any changes, please.
Something like others may be restrained from communicating publicly. And I don't know about at this time. I just, that phrase is kind of colloquial and.
So you would like to change that to what?
I think it's trying to say that other, and I wouldn't even say us, I would say others may be restrained from communicating publicly. Or constrained, not restrained. What do you guys think? I mean, we can disagree with it. It's really, our hands are tied from communicating.
Others may be.
Constrained from.
Restrained from.
Or we cannot comment publicly in detail at this time, very clear.
Okay.
Yeah, what do we want to say, we?
I don't know.
Well, if we're referring to ourselves, right?
Yeah. But some parties' perspectives may be shared publicly.
The school committee cannot comment publicly in detail at this time.
I'm not sure it is just the school.
Is that what you were trying to say?
No, I was just trying to get rid of "our hands are tied". So I was just trying to make it more, but.
Or maybe just take it as a sentence.
It is just the school committee.
But other people who are constrained from communicating.
What if you said the school committee and others?
But it's coming from us.
Yeah, it's coming from us.
But it doesn't necessarily, well.
But should we be speaking on behalf of people who are not?
That's true.
I don't know.
We also urge the community to remember that situations like this are quite complex and some parties' perspectives may be shared publicly.
Maybe we should just leave it if Kevin has the last.
Well, I don't think there's much difference from "our hands are tied" from commenting publicly to the school, to the school committee cannot comment publicly.
Yeah, I don't, I think it's a small edit that would take a small amount of time to get done, like pushed through, so if, I'm happy to circle back on that.
Or is that sentence even necessary? Just another thought? Is reading through it works more without it?
But I think that if you take it out, well, I think it just, I think the sentence does say to people, you know, just reminds them that we're not able to comment publicly. I guess that's why.
I don't know. I think that's important. If we're gonna put a statement.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on the word stakeholders?
Sure.
I'm just thinking, we want to acknowledge the concern many of our school community members have shared. Just think that's a little more like less business and exclusive.
School, community members. Okay. All right, yeah, I like that better. Okay, anything else? Anybody still thinking or?
I think you also should capitalize "district" in the first sentence at the end. Because we're talking about our district, so it's a specific.
Okay. Any, anything else? Overall, it's okay? You guys are all okay with this going out for the school committee? Okay?
So just make those changes.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make those, I'll have those changes made before it goes out. Okay. All right, let's see, consent agenda.
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Oh, Jeannie!
Okay, I just have a couple really small edits, so shall I just? Okay, I just have a couple really small edits, so shall I just send them to Diane?
Yes.
And just approve them?
Yes.
Because they're very small, you won't care.
Right.
You're like, this is.
Was it counsel?
Oh, I saw that one. I forgot to write it down. But I'll write it down. I know where it is.
Do you know where it is?
Well, I don't, but I'll find it. I'll send them all. There's just like three little ones. Okay, so there. Move to do it with?
I will move to approve the consent agenda with the revisions that Genie sends to Diane.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? No one is opposed. Everyone's in favor. Motion passes. Okay, sorry. So any matters not reasonably anticipated?
Yes, I have a matter not anticipated, so.
Really?
As you know, I have been a liaison with Erin to the HR DEIC. And we had a meeting last night and they would like to move forward with including the schools in the equity audit that the town has put funds aside for. My understanding, although I've not talked to Tom today yet, my understanding is that the funds set aside for the equity audit are not going to be a separate article at town meeting now. Now they're going to come out of the town budget. And so I did speak with John Bugby today about whether it would be possible to include the schools in that audit. And this is more of a high-level audit. I think there would be some drilling down in an equity audit for the schools that might have to supplement this initial audit because the school, doing an equity audit for the schools, I'm understanding is a much more detailed process than it is for the town. So the idea here would be to include the schools so they're financially possible in the currently funded equity audit. And then if follow-up is appropriate after that audit is completed, then we would seek funding to do a more significant drill down on the schools. Things like talking to students about their experiences, talking to staff about their experience, those kind of things that would not necessarily be part of a town audit. So I'm going to read you a brief email that John sent back to me. I did all this, this is all last Monday, we did this today, so. Hi Ellen, I just want to briefly get back to you on the equity assessment because I have done some additional research. I think there are a few other considerations. First, I do think that because the select board approved the funds, any change in the scope will need to be approved by the board. Second, the more I think of it, the more I'm thinking that adding the school to this equity audit would increase the scope exponentially. Therefore, we would need to consider that when it comes to time to issue an RFP, all that, we would need to consider that when it comes to time to issue an RFP. All that said, I do think that if the school is looking for more of a high-altitude assessment that they can then follow up on separately, then this may be a good compromise. I just want to make certain I got back to you. So what I'm looking for in this matter not anticipated is the okay of the committee to include the school system in the equity audit, the town's equity audit to the extent it is possible within the constraints of the current financial money that's been set aside. And then to the extent we need to do more, we will cross that bridge when we get to it.
Is this for the town's FY24 budget?
I believe so, yes. I believe so.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Sure.
Okay. Did they give you a sense of timeline when they would want this to take place?
Well, I think he is, he is right now trying to write his RFP, so he would be putting that out soon. We did have the conversation that for the schools, you might want to have school being session. But I think the high-altitude thing is reviewing policies, practices, you know, procedures, those kinds of things more than the daily life of schools and students in the schools. The other task I had from, or action item I had from the HR DEIC which I passed cleverly to Erin was to collect up a comprehensive list of all the programming that is currently being used in the schools. So, and that would be, I think when we go on the RFP, that would sort of give the, give a sense to bidders about, you know, sort of where the schools are, at least with some of this, because it would involve curriculum if it was a true school audit.
Yeah, and there are a fair number of vendors out there who do this sort of work in school systems. I don't know if those vendors also do municipal side stuff. And so I just, I wonder if, I wonder what the specialties are, people who do something on the town side versus something on the school side? So that would be maybe part of the RFP process.
I think that was John's idea. John's sense was that that would be part of the RFP process and he would, he would try to get bids for a town audit, school audit, or some combined, as he says, high-altitude audit.
Would an RFP, is he anticipating an RFP going out before the end of this year or?
I don't think so, based on what he's talking about.
I mean, I hadn't heard about this before, so.
Would you like to be part of this, Perry?
I don't know if I have the bandwidth to be part of this, but I could think of some people who I might want to try to task with being part of this.
I had already made a couple of suggestions to him. I suggested Carolyn and LaToya.
Carolyn definitely occurs to me. And I might want to at least have some conversations, just thinking about.
Michelle was the other person I wanted.
Yep, she's someone I think of as well. I could see, I could see there being different purposes potentially on the town side versus on the school side. And we just want to understand more to make sure that.
Because the town, of course, will include the police department, the fire department, like there's a, you know, sort of a broad. But then when you add the schools, the schools tend to overwhelm the town's finances pretty quickly.
We've talked about, I mean, internally, we've talked about the idea of an equity audit for multiple years, so.
But they're moving and, you know, there's such a thing as momentum. The other thing I think is it is by understanding that the select board would look favorably on including us as long as we don't swamp the financial picture.
It sounds exciting and I totally agree with you. Momentum is a wonderful, wonderful thing and something being paid for is a wonderful thing. And so I'd love to just have some conversations or have some people be a part of those conversations as it moves forward.
Right, so why don't I send an email back to John, copy you, and sort of put everybody together, right?
Yeah.
And also the way I look at it is if, if it's just getting going, then at least whatever looks seen is done as part of the town's audit will show us where we should focus for further work.
Right, starting point.
It's hard for me to imagine that it wouldn't be helpful in some way, shape.
Sounds great.
Is John the town person, who is the HR DEIC person?
I was, yes. I think the answer to that is yes. I don't know if he's the HR DEIC person, but he is the person that is in charge of this process.
John Bugby?
John Bugby.
Yes, yeah, yeah, he manages all the, I mean, the assistant town manager.
I was directed to him, so.
Great.
Okay.
Sounds good. Wonderful. Thanks. Any questions or anything else on that, or should we move into executive session?
So wait, you know what? I think that board of selectmen said they want a school committee vote, so can I have a vote?
Wait, so can we move forward? Are we okay moving forward with all the input Perry wanted to give us?
I'm comfortable with the idea of the school committee moving forward as long as we have the opportunity to participate in conversations.
Alright, so let me see, I can do a motion. I move that we request that the school, school district be added to the equity audit currently under consideration by the town. And that would be included in the RFP process to the extent it's practicable, given the financial, the funding that is available for this stage of the audit.
Do you have a second?
Okay.
Good. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? No one's opposed. Everyone's in favor. Motion passes. Great. Okay. Any other matters, or should I move into executive session? Good. Alright, we'll move into executive session then. See, I move to enter executive session for the purposes of discussing strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Wayland Teachers Association, the Wayland Educational Secretaries Association, custodians, and food service as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 as discussion in open session that had a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. Discussing strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A2 as listed on the agenda and as a discussion in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. Reviewing and declassifying executive session minutes as listed, as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22, April 27th, 2015, August 21st, 2017, March 2nd, 2022, March 16th, 2022, April 13th, 2022, April 27th, 2022, May 11th, 2022, and May 25th, 2022. We'll pass over the executive session minutes as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 22 for March 1st, 2023. We will be reviewing the response to the February 14th, 2023, open meeting law complaint filed by George Harris as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the position of the school committee. Reviewing the response to the March 8th, 2023, open meeting law complaint filed by George Harris as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A1, as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the position of the school committee. We discussing strategy with respect to litigation as permitted by MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A3 as a discussion in open session may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the school committee. In parentheses, EZ verse Wayland School Committee et al. MCAD complaint. The school committee will be joined by Perry Graham, acting superintendent, and Diane Marabella, recording secretary. The school committee will adjourn an executive session and will not reconvene in open session. Have a second.
Second.
Roll call. Erin?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Genie?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Chris, yes. Okay.